9:00 AM, I'd like to call the Adams County Board of Supervisors, read the order. I'll start with word of prayer. Father, we thank you for another opportunity to meet Lord God. We thank you for waking us up this morning already. We thank you for traveling grace to get us here, Lord. We ask that you be in the midst of our business today, Lord God, and be in the midst of all our lives at our times, Lord. We ask that you pray for each and every elected official sitting here, Lord God. We pray for all the other elected officials, Lord. We pray for the city of Natchez and Adams County, Lord God, to continue to work together and do a good thing, Lord. When it's all over, we ask that you lead us in that dying hour. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Play the religions?
I play the religions. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to run a call. Supervisor Gray, absent.
Present.
Supervisor Miller.
Present.
Supervisor Wilson. Deputy Clerk Paige Dean.
Present.
Chancery Clerk Brandon Lewis.
Present.
Turner Scott Slover. And I am present. I'd like to get a motion for the approval of a may minutes. Can I get a motion? It been properly moved by Supervisor Miller. It been properly settled by Supervisor Gray. Would that be in a discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of "I." In opposed, nays have the same right. I'd like to get a motion for the approval of a docket. It been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins.
Take it.
It been properly settled by Supervisor Gray. Would there be any discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of "I." In opposed, nays have the same right. I'd get an approval of the monthly financial report. We're gonna start with Adams County Sheriff Officer Report. Can I get a motion? Second. We go. Do one motion and approve the Adams County Sheriff's Report, Chancery Clerk Report, and the person. Now can I get a motion? It's been properly moved and properly settled by Supervisor Gray. All in, would that be in a discussion? All in favor vote by using the sign of "I." In opposed, nays have the same right. I would add to our special presentation, elected official scholarship, Ciara Demby.
Mr. President, uh... I just wanna say, uh, this is an elected official scholarship that we created for students at Natchez High, NECA, A.C., and Cathedral. And, uh, this individual for this scholarship is Ms. Ciara Demby. And I just read a couple of her comments. Make every moment count. Find your passion and pursue it. Never give up and always be true to who you are. And I just wanna say, on behalf of the elected officials, she is the valedictor at NECA. And, uh, she did a awesome job. And, uh, don't spend all this money in one place. Could you come up, please?
Thank you, Mr. President.
The vow. You owe this, and I keep the check. Oh, 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 oh.
He scared me.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You don't wanna say that, do you?
Let me say this to her. Let me say this about her, too. She's a great student, for one thing. She's in my district, thank God. And another thing is, she was one of our summer workers last year, too. Went to party, went to transfer to her office.
Thank you for blessed to have her with us. She was an excellent worker, hard worker. Always seen a beautiful smile on her face every single day, so...
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
All right, we're moving down with our county business. We'll have, uh, update from our lobby, Mr. Gray Harper.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thanks to the board for letting us come. Also, I want to introduce Brett Bailey to my office, seated right in front of me. Most of you've had a chance to meet him and appreciate his hard work on behalf of the city and the county. And I want to just mention a couple of things. First, a very productive, uh, 2023 Mississippi State Legislative Session. In that, Adams County received $500,000 for Carriage Point Road. Natchez will receive $500,000 for Concord Avenue Drainage Project. And then, Natchez also received an additional $500,000 for various other drainage projects. Just to mention on the pending earmark requests that we have right now from our federal delegations. First, the storm system replacement for South Natchez submitted by both Senator Wicker and Senator Hyde Smith. That amount is, uh, 874,000 to 1 million, that range. And then, of course, you know, the Natchez-Adams County Airport Aircraft Rescue Firefighting Equipment. That vehicle, that was submitted by both Senator Wicker and Senator Hyde Smith. Richard Nelson said this was the most important thing. They got written up all the time by FAA on having old equipment. And as we look towards trying to improve the airport, towards trying to get, uh, commercial capability back in, this is gonna be one of the things that you gotta do on the check marked there. Submitted by both senators, as I said, $900,000 request. Congressman Thompson submitted a million-dollar request for the city for the Natchez Forks to Freedom Park project that's there as well. And of course, uh, you know, Natchez, Adams County, you guys do such a great job of promoting. If you can get people down here, you know they love it. You know, last year, we had staffers from the various federal offices come down for a couple of days. And I know President Gaines, we had them out at Jefferson College, out of the airport, other places. They went out to the forts and viewed those. Well, there were several Senator Hyde Smith staffers on that trip, as you know. Well, guess where Senator Hyde Smith's having her staff retreat this year, later this summer, in Natchez. So when you have that promoting, and it does, I think a couple of staffers were ready to leave Washington, move to Natchez when they got through with everything. So it's, uh, so you do a great job of selling the area and promoting it, and it is such a great place to live and raise a family. Now, one of the past earmarks, we thought we were where we needed to be with Morningtown Road, which, as you know, when we first started, that was the number-one request on trying to get that done. And we wound up getting that earmark request, working with our federal delegation, certainly with M.D.O.T. And then we find out the bad news of the cost overruns. You know, these are things nobody can plan on or predict. But it does really kinda skew the project and make it much more difficult than having discussed this, looked at it, what to do. We did have a meeting last week at M.D.O.T. with Brad White, his Chief of Staff, and some other folks there at M.D.O.T. Trying to figure out, okay, how do we get back to where we need to go? M.D.O.T., uh, state funds are probably not gonna be able to help us, to be quite honest, in that regard. We would almost be inclined to, certainly, which is not what you wanna say or hear, the next legislative session for the state won't be till January. Well, then, you know, you're delaying it further to get that additional funding in. But that is certainly an avenue for us. I'm flying to D.C. in the morning. Have meetings with both senators right now. Set up one tomorrow afternoon, one Wednesday morning. And we're gonna discuss, this issue is an ongoing problem. Because I know, I know this, and I know Supervisor Gray knows, that, you know, this was a common theme for M.D.O.T. Everybody's project is, like, they thought they had the money. And now, gosh, with the cost of whether it's pipe or asphalt, particularly asphalt costs, are just through the roof. And so now we have bids that are significantly over what the money that we knew we have. And so we've gotta go... So hopefully, we can have that discussion up there, kinda look at these things. But, you know, it's a project that's just gotta get done. And now that we've got the elementary school, more students coming in for this year, it's become even more important as we look ahead. But just know, this is an ongoing issue. We just can't give up on. I will say that, I think we've done a good job of promoting Natchez and Adams County in our state legislature with some of our key leaders that are there. I would anticipate that you'll have some come down to visit during the non-legislative time between now and the fall. So we'll keep you advised on that as we go forward. But I wanted to come down, just tell you a few things that we were working on, so you would know. I wish we could wave a magic wand, Mr. President, and come up with, you know, another 1.3 for Morningtown Road or get the asphalt prices to roll back to a lower level, which doesn't look like that's the route right this minute. But that's, that's just a general overview update of where we are. Be happy to take a few questions. If they're, if they're hard questions, I'm gonna let Brett answer them, okay?
And my other question?
No, I think he answered my question. I was gonna ask what was the cost of, actual cost of the Morningtown project, but you did get that out.
Yes, sir.
All right, hands back, and have another question.
I just wanna thank Congressman Harper for coming and giving us an update. This is something that the city and the county partnered on years ago.
Yes, sir.
And it's, uh, it's very apparent when you go to the state level what our state delegation, our federal delegation, see with Natchez and Adams County working together. It's a common remark we get when we go up there. They say, you know, which other cities and counties would do what y'all do? It makes our job easier. But I wanna thank y'all for what you're doing every day. Brett, I wanna thank you. You've come in and been very informative, helpful, and I know y'all work hard for us every day. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Supervisor.
I'll just say the same thing to kind of people back out. Really appreciate the work that y'all have been doing for, you know, the last three years. We have seen some major improvement with the city and the county working together. It has been different, but we have gotten things accomplished, and we just appreciate what y'all do for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I give one, one more comment real quick? The multimodal fund that went through the state legislature this year, $30 million. Actually, there's probably another rate, so it's probably 38 million that's designed, that we wanna try to access later this year for the port. So I didn't mention the port in the update, but that's so important that we make some progress there with the application later for the state, and that'll be part of this one.
Yes, all right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Uh, I also wanna thank, uh, Mr. Harper and, uh, for everything he did for us and City. Me and him go way back. We built a relationship, uh, some time ago, so, uh, thank you for everything.
Thank you, Supervisor Gray. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. President.
All right, next we have Mr. Jenny Rantzen, President of the Attorney for Business.
I beg to prepare to copy my speech if you want to follow along. I will for all supervisors. My name is Jenny Rantzen Gonzalez. I'm a native of Natchez, and I'm also a certified public accountant. I recently inherited property in Adams County. I'm hereby applying for permission from the board to convert my warehouse into a licensed marijuana bakery. There are no children, no churches, or schools in the vicinity. I will purchase marijuana for bakery products only from licensed Mississippi growers. I will not sell marijuana or marijuana products in Adams County. I will only sell products to licensed Mississippi marijuana dispensaries. Currently, there are no marijuana bakeries in Mississippi. I will be a model employer. I will have employee tuition reimbursement. Eventually, we will have on-site childcare. We will have career paths for employees. We will comply with our licensing, security, videotaping, and accounting protocols. We will be subject to inspection. Why do I want to do the marijuana bakery business? Here's the backstory. In 2021, my husband, Tomas Gonzalez, got cancer. He enrolled in Kaiser Hospice. When Tomas felt excruciating pain, we phoned hospice. Hospice instructed us to get, instructed me to give Tomas morphine. I felt terrible about it. Tomas was muddly and foggy and groggy for hours. When he finally woke up, Tomas told me that he thought he was dying. Actually, he was not dying. Instead, he had a bad reaction to morphine. Tomas said he did not want to take morphine. Instead, he wanted to be clear-headed. So I went to the marijuana dispensary and bought Tomas hybrid marijuana cookies. Tomas nibbled the cookies for pain for two months. Only for the two days before he died did Tomas ask for and get morphine. During the two months that Tomas nibbled cookies, our friends came over. We played guitar and sang. We played cards. We had dinner parties. There were lots of laughs. Tomas and I became closer. He told me about his hopes and dreams, including his hopes and dreams for me. We would've been robbed two months of fun had Tomas taken morphine instead of nibbling marijuana cookies for cancer pain. My bakery products will be labeled either as sativa, indica, or hybrid strains. Other Mississippi marijuana products do not make this critical distinction. Hopefully, Adams County sunsets will soon follow a marijuana bakery in my backyard, where lots of Natchezians will have great jobs. My resume is enclosed with this packet. I stand ready to answer your questions. Thank you.
I guess this is our first one from the board. Mr. Turner, how does we?
Yeah, I didn't mean to take the petition. I haven't seen it right now.
I previously submitted a letter. I have an extra one.
Yes, and that's what we gonna, uh, we'll take, um... What we gonna do, um, Ms. Gonzalez, we gonna definitely take everything under advisement and allow the attorney to look over and see exactly what we need to do and how we need to handle this. And we'll take that advice, and he'll, he'll get back with you. But then, what say, a week gap?
Yeah, we could say, have to go back to the board after next regular meeting.
Yeah, and he'll go back and get out, find out everything we need to do, and y'all, uh, he'll make contact with you. All right.
Do I need to come back before the board?
Huh?
Do I need to come back before the board?
I'll let you know if they have any questions or anything.
We have any questions, we will. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to take this under advisement and allow attorney to do the legal work.
We take, uh, his application under priority for marijuana bakery.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray. Can I get a second? It's been properly settled by Supervisor Hutchins. We take it under advisement, uh, in a discussion.
Mr. President, uh, I'm just looking at orders. I see quite a few people looking around like marijuana, marijuana. But the state of Mississippi did pass a law for, uh, medical marijuana, so, uh, it's legal to have, uh, medical marijuana in the state of Mississippi. Not recreational, but medical.
She happens to own a bakery. She's doing...
No, I'm just explaining it to the people that don't know.
All right.
I know she knows.
Any more discussion? If there be any more discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of "I." In opposed, nays have the same right. Motion carried unanimously. All right, Ms. Lori Miles, prompt to watch.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Lori Miles, and I live at 500 Woodville Road on the corner of Lowell Woodville and Cloverdale. I was born there. I grew up there my whole life. Um, over the years, the, uh, my property has been washing terribly. The county came in several years ago and put in a covert, which caused most of my backyard to wash away. Take 10 steps out of my back door now, it's like you go off the edge of a cliff. And as a young girl, there were gardens back there, and there was acres of land back there, and they were gone away. I'm asking the county, I'm desperate to have some help. There are holes in my backyard where I'm scared to walk because there are sinkholes back there. And the county calls my problem. I think the county should be able to help me in some kind of way.
All right, well...
Look, Brett, what's your address again?
500 Lowell Woodville Road. And I was assured, well, since in 2019, my house burned to the ground. And before we rebuilt, I have a text saying that we were approved to get these repairs done to my yard. Otherwise, I would've moved somewhere else. I love that property. I wanna stay there, but right now, I don't know what I, what I should do because it's all washing away.
All right, and the first thing I'm gonna have to do is, uh, send the... Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna let you speak up.
I have spoke with Ms. Miles a couple of times. I've met Keith and also y'all's other brother out there. I think Robbie and I both did a few years ago. We have submitted the site for EWP projects while we were under rain events. And Robbie and I actually came out on May 18th, which was after, it wasn't a board meeting day, but we rode out there, it was a Thursday, we rode out there and looked at the holes in the backyard. Robbie, if you wanna speak on your recommendation on those holes?
I have them here, Ms. Miles. I, you know, took pictures that they, we were out there. And it is, it's some small holes coming in. And I told him that, you know, far as the county coming, it's private property. We can't come back there and fix them. But, you know, if it was my property, I would dig around to figure out where they were going. He'd put some flowable field or some concrete in them to try to seal those where the water's going because it's always gonna be bigger over time. And put your dirt back over it and seal, you know, that way.
I did tell her that we could do spoiled dirt, but it's not, it's not gonna fix your property.
Yes, spoiled dirt's not gonna help.
But why was I approved then not approved? I have a text where it says I was approved for, to give my, this property...
Then that text was approved.
Uh, it was, uh, Supervisor before you came, uh...
Mr. Lass?
Mr. Lass, it's...
And I can't answer that question. I know we applied, I think it's been applied for three times, I think, if I'm not mistaken, because I know I've spoke with you.
But like you said, the property was approved and to me fix. And we're saying that we need to be on a rain event, but every time it rains, we losing more and more property. This hadn't started overnight, and one rain event is not gonna fix it. You understand what I'm saying?
Well, but what he's saying is, we can't, we can't apply for an EWP until we're under a rain event. That's the way it works.
But if it was, if it was applied for and approved...
I can't speak on that. I was, I was the president.
But, but you, at, at that point in time, you, we talked to you and you said yourself, you said the property was approved. You knew it was approved to be fixed. And then, we heard nothing, we heard nothing. And eight months later, you said, oh, it was taken off.
It was taken off the list, yeah.
So that's, that's, that's our question. And that's the fight we had, and that's the problem we had.
I think you came out, you missed the dollar, and, um...
It was Mike Lass at the time, and you came out at that point in time.
And, uh, and, you know, R.C.S. Representative, Mike Green came, Michael Green.
And the property was approved to be, to be repaired. Because at that point in time, after the house burned down, we said, well, listen, I had, I had another piece of property that we could've rebuilt on. And we weren't gonna build back there, but we were assured...
That was gonna be...
That the property's gonna be fixed and repaired. And we built the house back there, and now... Now, I can't walk from this podium to that grill without holes in the backyard. We scared it's gonna take the house. And if this starts causing problems to where... Foundation problem, then what are we gonna do?
So what I'm gonna ask Mr. Dollar to do, would you give my demand to give my training with the R.C.S. and see how many times that property was applied for? And the...
And was it each approved, whatever?
What's the name?
Yeah, give me that date.
And the dates, and the dates of each, please. Because I know we've run it at least three times since I've been here.
This was on July 31st, 2019.
July 31st, 2019?
Yes, sir.
I would check with Mike Green, with the R.C.S., get him to pull their files, pull the...
I mean, we have the, you know, the copy of the email and the text that's here, saying the property's approved to be repaired.
And every time it rains, I'm having bigger holes in my yard.
That covert, the covert from Cloverdale Road going into Lowell Woodville, when they put that in there, and on a large rain, it's like a river washing back, and it's taking the property away. And we need, I need some help. This has been my mom's house, this has been my yard, you know, my whole life. And in that same token, it's...
It's gone.
It's leaving, we losing it.
A little bit I have left, I would love to preserve it and keep it.
My question is, you said earlier that it was a drain going through y'all property?
Through the back, on the backside of the property, yes, from the, from the...
In the corner.
The corner, Lowell Woodville Road and Cloverdale.
It's under the road.
There's a drain under the road, and it's just washing. When it rains, it's just washing, it's just washing the property. I played back there where there, where there's a hole now.
So, what I imagine is, so the county put that drain there?
Yes.
It was done for my... It's a crosspipe under Cloverdale Road. What it is, is behind the houses, other side of Cloverdale Road, what's a drain, it's a pipe that runs all behind there.
It's a pipe now, it wasn't a pipe.
It was a pipe in the beginning.
That's the reason, I guess, the pipe was put in years ago when the county put the pipe in.
But what the county would have known that they would take my property?
All right.
Well, my question is this. My question is this. The drain, the water off the county streets are running through this drain and going behind her?
The Lowell Woodville Road is running down...
Down Cloverdale Road?
Down behind those houses. Then it comes under Cloverdale Road and runs behind her house, runs behind that church, I can't think of the name of that church, but on back through that way towards, uh, Pope Johnson's property, and then on the other side.
Yeah, it's on the... Brittany, I would love, I would love for some more people to come look at it. I mean, you're welcome to come to 500 Lowell Woodville and Cloverdale and Lowell Woodville Road and, and just look at the property, and it's...
Now, the concern is, uh, in the past, when, when I go out and look at these drains, but from what he's saying, that pipe is closed behind their house, it's not open? Because you know how some of those pipes be opening, let all that water out behind people's houses, and then it erodes and so on. But that pipe is straight?
Straight running.
And it lets, lets the water out where?
Behind, through the house, through behind those houses.
Drain's covered.
It drains.
So he's saying the water is let out behind his house?
Right.
The only thing I'm saying, if that water is coming out county road and it's a pipe and it's letting it out behind those, behind his house...
It's two-year statute of limitations. If you alter the natural drainage of water, you have two years, uh, excuse me, against the county for that kind of thing.
Okay, okay.
And we didn't go change the streams again.
Let me say this, let me say this. Was that an EWP project, or is that just something county did?
And that's what I was gonna ask. When Cloverdale Road come out to Lowell Woodville Road, when it's tied with a crosspipe, just...
Remember that before that pipe was there?
That's what I'm asking. So the water draining up from Lowell Woodville Road that come and hit, where that is, it wasn't a crosspipe always there?
No.
So that water just built up from that road's back up behind those houses?
It, it's built up, the water built up, and it was, it was, it wasn't a crosspipe there. And when they re-get that and put the crosspipe in there?
And that's been 20-plus years.
Yes, it's been there.
It's been all kinds of stations, way through the time.
Hey, this is my, gonna be my suggestion as the president. It's gonna be my suggestion that we got a situation, some of the situation happened before we even got here. Let's reassess the situation, get legal, see what, what we can do. I understand the EWP project, it was submitted before us. But what we gonna do as a county is go back and... I understand the EWP project, it was submitted before us, but what we gonna do as a county is go back and let us take a look at it, because I wasn't here at that time, the road manager wasn't here at that time, and I think Kevin Upworth wasn't here at that time, and seeing that Ricky or Andrew don't have the knowledge of what's going on down there, because we don't kind of remember it there.
I wasn't here.
He wasn't here, so let us get a, let, can we go back from here and reassess it, and then we can see what we come up with?
Please.
And that way, we can, you know, because right here, just going around and searching, we kind of just turning the, uh, into wheel, because nobody have the knowledge of what went on, we can look at it and give y'all a better answer. Yes, sir, Mr. Will.
They will research every time that it was applied for, we'll get that report, and I'll get back to y'all with that information.
And we will definitely want to put you off for a long time, we will get on this after here, even though it's this district, we all gonna work on it, to figure out and get y'all an answer.
And I'm gonna get with JKS, previous engineer, who's lived in engineering for forty, fifty years, and see what they know about this project.
Okay, and I like I say, the, the, the thing that, I guess, is disheartening, is for me to be forced to be told, it's definitely approved, it's definitely, and when we get the emails, it's definitely approved, it's definitely done and fixed. We build a house there, and then now they're saying, there's nothing we can do about it, that, that's what's, that's what's kind of...
I understand, and I, and I can say, that's why I said we gonna reassess it, because there was, before us, there was what your previous supervisor...
I understand, and that's why we bring it before the board.
And I appreciate it, and we'll do our session, and we'll get back with you, give us a week or so, uh, maybe no more to let them do the legal work, find out all the legal work, and then we'll get back with y'all, and see what we can do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all right, uh, Ms. Bill Harper, volunteer fire department update.
I'm here on half of Liberty Road. I want to present y'all with a certificate of appreciation for y'all allowing us the opportunity to go to West Point and pick up that fire engine. She drove three hundred and twenty miles back, she made it, she... Um, at this current time, I'm waiting on Fire Equipment Services, that's the guy that comes, checks our pumps out front to back, to come check it, he should be here next week. When, once he gives me the thumbs up, the okay, she will be in service, I've already got her decelled out. She is, I'm just literally waiting on him to say, it's good to go. So, I would like to present y'all with this.
And how many miles y'all drove that truck?
Three hundred and twenty. This is the fire chief, the guy who's the truck donated and has taken possession of the truck. She's gonna decell. Got her decelled on the front.
Let, let me ask you a question, I just want to know, um, have you all received y'all fire gear?
Yeah.
Yes, you have received it.
Yeah, he's in it.
Okay, great, great.
All right, we appreciate, uh, the work that you do, and we appreciate, uh, not just you, but all the volunteer fire departments, uh, because you do save, uh, saves lives and save property, and we appreciate it, anybody that have been upcoming.
I just want to thank Ms. Gillis for all she does for Liberty Road. Um, I really, really appreciate you, because you always come and give updates, and hear your little concern, concern when it comes to being a volunteer fire, uh, fighter, and I just want to thank you for everything you do.
Mr. President, I want to thank you too. And I miss our wild mark days, when we raised more money than all of them at wild mark, that's right.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you also, I saw the pictures on social media when y'all went up and picked it up with the fire department up there, so it's pretty cool, and that, thank y'all for everything.
All right, uh, we gonna move along with Mr. Donovan Weeks, uh, Bonaventure Fire Service.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, this is Donovan Weeks from Bonaventure, uh, you know, we had the fire academy last week, and this time we're going, and if you just want to fill your eye in on my fire trucks and all, so I'd love to talk to, I want to pass these out to y'all.
Good morning, thank you for allowing me to be here. Uh, was over here for the fire chiefs conference, the fire fighter association meeting, enjoying our time over here at Fair City and, and County for the last week. Uh, met a lot of great firemen with Adams County over here. A little bit about me, I'm, uh, from Lawrence County, I'm the fire coordinator, flood plain manager, but my full-time job is I sell fire trucks, turn out gear and equipment. Bonaventure Fire and Safety is a dealer for Rosenbar fire trucks, and we're the largest fire truck builder in the world. We have three plants in United States, seven in Europe. With that being said, we have a shop in Monticello, Mississippi, so we have mechanics available twenty-four, seven, weekends and holidays available, and most of our stuff's mobile service out of Monticello, we're back, so we interviewed another mechanic today, put another mechanic on full-time. Uh, I mean, a lot, a lot of people not aware that we have a fire truck shop locally, or, or close by around eighty-four corridor. Uh, I was talking to, uh, Daryl, uh, looking at the needs for, uh, Adams County, and as you know, most fire trucks are only good for twenty years. Fifteen on a commercial, they can do a four-hour pump test to, uh, get an extension for five additional years. Fire academy's been a little bit more lenient, but, uh, on commercial trucks, that's running out. One of the things that it does, the most important thing, of looking at an investment, and this is an investment in a new truck, this truck right here that I'm showing you pictures, is actually in production. It'll be completed by the end of this month, so all the bells and the shiny stuff, and the stainless wheel covers and all that stuff's not only what you're seeing in photos, because that's actually at our plant right now being produced, uh, which is probably not gonna last very long in the market. If you notice nowadays, the out time for a new fire truck is anywhere from four hundred something days to some manufacturers, or even over two years. So, uh, they're kind of a hot commodity to be able to get a hold of them. But, uh, like I said, it's, it's imperative number one for the safety of your firemen. Uh, if you don't have good equipment, it's no matter how much training or whatever they have, it's no good without water. And without a truck you can count on to get them there and properly service the county. You're looking at a twenty, twenty-five year investment, I know at that price today, that's last year's pricing, new trucks now, you can cost a little more than that, it's gonna be a little over four hundred. That was a three seventy-eight. And the thing to look at, oh, it's twelve hundred and fifty gallons of water, it's got a fifteen hundred GPM hell pump on it. A lot of you, if you don't know much about fire trucks or whatever, the importance of a fifteen hundred GPM pump compared to what we always run as a twelve fifty, is that pump will ensure you to be able to handle whatever you need to move big water even into the future. So, uh, when you're looking at a twenty-year investment, you need to plan for tomorrow, not just today. And, uh, if the city of Natchez needs help or whatever to push water in a multi-story building, or, or a commercial, uh, large fire, a fifteen hundred GM pu, GPM pump will handle multiple lines as well as big water. Uh, but it also handles your day-to-day, just regular house fires and, and brush fires and things of that nature as well. But anyway, I just wanted to bring this before you, uh, I know y'all are gonna be, if not already, or should be, in the market for a truck. Um, there's some things that could affect your fire ratings. Uh, if the rating bureaus come in, you start like doing a five-year plan or whatever, I just went through them. I just had to buy a new truck for Lawrence County, because ours is twenty-two years old, and we were in, fixing to lose our ratings, so it's gonna take us from a class six up to a ten, which is about fifty to sixty percent increase on your homeowners insurance. And that's not a good deal, so, uh, anyway, just wanted to bring it to you, if you got any questions, uh, I appreciate you considering it, and, uh, consider it as an investment for your community, and first of all, for your firemen, and your volunteers' firemen, the safety of them on these things.
Hey, well, we appreciate you coming for the board, and, um, we'll all, uh, get together and take everything under consideration. Uh, and, um, so, in the future, thank you for letting us, you have a local shop that's on the eighty-four corridor to work on and stuff like this, so uh, as the president, I said, we'll take everything, uh, take everything under advisement, and we'll open the floor for any other supervisors who have any other things to say.
Well, I, I did leave out one thing, we are on state contract, that's why I enclosed that on the back, that's a value point state contract, so... Just so you know that.
Right. Anybody else have anything to say? If not, we appreciate your time, and, uh, hopefully in the future, we'll be able to do some business with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we gonna, Mr. Paul Perry, that'll, that's gonna be a negative session. No, we gonna have to have, uh, we know who, uh, what it is, that's gonna be, uh, executive session, that'll be employee, an employee, am I correct, Scott? That's correct.
That's typically having handbooks, yes, Mr. President.
Right. All right, so, we gonna move on to city government event, in the city government.
I see Joey's here, but he might want to do that under departmental reports. Y'all want to do that under your, under your report? Okay, all right, that's not, actually, we want to do that.
And the city, uh, government, there'll be no city government, let's move right on down to the departmental report.
Good morning, my name is Denise Price, and I'm the purchase clerk for Adams County. I would like to spread the procurement card and travel card across the minutes for approval for May.
All right, uh, you heard the question of the purchase clerk, uh, can I get a motion? Been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins? Has there been a proper second by Supervisor Miller? Would there be any discussion? Would there be no discussion? All in favor, vote by using the sound of aye. In opposed, ladies have the same right, motion carried unanimous. Okay, move forward.
First, we, um, I'd just like to announce, I was informed on June first by Kirk Auto Group that the seven vehicles should be delivered to him by June nineteenth or twentieth from the manufacturers. Also, we, we should have the bid numbers for the remaining three vehicles by June ninth. Just want to give an update on that part. And with that being said, um, Scott and I were working on the lease purchase for the vehicles, so I reached out to four different banks, and I got a response from, response from Delta, Trustmark, and Cadence. Um, Delta offered exempt, tax exempt, with five point nineteen percent for five years, and four point ninety-nine percent for three years. Trustmark offered five point six percent for three years, and five point three nine percent for five years. Cadence is five point seven eight for three and five years, and this lease is for annual payments.
All right, so what's your recommendation?
Yeah, Delta offered tax exempt, five point nineteen percent for five years, and four point ninety-nine for three years.
That's your recommendation, so you heard the, uh, recommendation of the purchase clerk? Five point nine for...
Five point one nine.
Five point one nine for... Go ahead.
Five point one nine for five years, and four point nine nine for three years, tax exempt.
And you said you've been working with Scott on this?
Yes, Scott and I, um, worked together on this, I think he's, uh, so, but, um, we've contacted four banks, and Concordia was the only one that did not do lease purchase, and the other two...
Okay, um, make the motion, uh, pending review, I mean, because he's outside right now, we can't hear from him. So, can I get a motion pending? Uh, been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, properly seconded by Supervisor, uh, Miller, that we will accept this, nor be a pending, uh, the attorney's agenda. Would there be any discussion? Would there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sound of aye. In opposed, ladies have the same right, motion carried unanimous. All right?
We had the bid openings on June first for the striping of the road out of County. And we had traffic control products. Was the first bid at three hundred forty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, which include four-inch high plastic edge strip, white, sixty miles, four-inch high plastic stripe, yellow, ninety miles, four-inch high plastic legend stripe, white, a hundred and twenty miles. And the second bid was lane line, three hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, four-inch high plastic, continues white, sixty miles, four-inch high plastic, continues yellow, ninety miles, a four-inch high plastic, legend, white, a hundred and twenty miles.
Right, my name is Norman, where the traffic can go?
Correct.
We'll have gotten with, uh, the road manager.
This is on the asphalt project that we're doing now, it's been stripped, is what, what this is.
Yes, sir.
Sounds great.
All right.
This is part of the...
Asphalt project, although what they're making too deep to strike, just because it's, it's early on, before the project gets started, we're gonna have to strike some of it.
All right, uh, you heard the question of the purchase clerk, uh, can I get a motion? Been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins? Proper seconded by Supervisor Miller, would there be any discussion?
Yes, this is just for the material?
No, this is material and labor.
This was not part of the PO originally?
No, not from, we held part of it from the asphalt for this. I discussed it before the board, we just discussed all this back when we were doing this, that it would be a cost of striking, so we didn't use all our PO towards asphalt, we saved some to go towards striking.
Yes, sir. All right. Would there be any more discussion? If not, all in favor, vote by using the sound of aye.
Aye.
In opposed, ladies have the same right, motion carried unanimous.
Okay. Continue.
Continue.
Okay, um, Mr. Fur is gonna elaborate on the Chester Willis Field project to provide us with an update.
Yes, uh, as you remember, we took bids, uh, two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, I guess, before your last board meeting, on the renovations to the field portion of Chester Wil, Willis Field. The bids came in high, uh, the original bid amount was one million nine hundred and three thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Uh, at the last boarding, board meeting, we made a recommendation, since we only had one bidder on the project, that we go back to that bidder and try to, uh, value engineer the, the project as, as much as we could. Uh, we did have some pretty good success doing that. Um, I want to say, from, from the beginning, uh, of the project, we had a lot of, uh, i- issues with getting people interested in bidding the work. Uh, I believe it's because it, it had, uh, artificial field component, and, and we had to get a subcontractor, basically from, from out of state to come in to do it. We had several people that were interested, but they didn't submit bids. We had one, we, the bid that we did receive, which, which was from N.K. Stubbs, uh, is a local general contractor, is contracting with an out-of-state, uh, turf contractor. Uh, when we started assessing the bids, we, we looked at their, their prices, a- and, and they looked at their prices, and there were some items that they, uh, could not get quotes on, um, prior to the bid date, so they had, they had numbers in their bid that were, were, uh, higher numbers, because they didn't have a, a real number. So, without changing anything on the project, uh, the contractor, uh, Stubbs came back with a, a first, uh, kind of a repricing of the project, uh, deducting a hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars. That's just, just by looking at his bids and getting, getting better quotes on the numbers that, that he had, had holes in his bids on. Uh, then we asked both the general contractor and the field contractor to look at some, um, some reductions in, in costs that we could, we could provide without changing the scope of the project. So, the scope is still an artificial turf infield, uh, with gravel warning tracks, new fencing, wind screens, uh, new dugouts, new... new fencing, wind screens, new dugouts, new backstops, new backstop netting, and drainage irrigation in the outfield and a sodded outfield. We looked at our designs and how to make it more efficient from a grading standpoint to reduce the amount of materials that we had. We also looked at the type of materials that were more available locally and as a cost relative to crushed stone, which is very expensive to get here in Natchez. So without changing the layout and just changing the methods of building the field, all of these methods are still appropriate in, you know, in terms of the design of the construction of the field. We were able to reduce the cost by another two hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Now again, the only change, physical change to this is the original plans had us relocating one of the bullpens from the left field side of the field to the right field. We're gonna just renovate that, not bullpen, we're gonna renovate that batting cage in place rather than building a new one and having two together in right field, which is a minor change and actually physically may work better if you have two teams or two schools that need to practice. So the total value engineer, the total reduction in the bid cost now is four hundred and thirty-four dollars, four hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars, which brings us to a project total of four million four hundred and sixty-nine two hundred and thirty dollars for the field portion of the project. So that's my recommendation, is that that number be accepted as our starting price for the field.
Joey, back up, one million.
One million, yeah, I, yes.
Not four million.
For the record, for the record. In the right direction, not the wrong.
I saw what you can back there, right.
That's a heck of a V.E., right? No, one million four hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty dollars would be the new project total. The way this would work, if you approve it, is we would accept the base bid and immediately do a change order for these deductive changes so that we would paper and memorialize the changes to the project that we are making so that the project record and the construction documents will be in order and then we would be able to issue a note to proceed so they could get started. In addition to doing this, we also looked at the items that have to come, and if you recall from our original approval, we are planning to do a lease purchase for sports lighting. That project is in the, we're working toward getting that complete so that those lights can be put in. And so that is outside of the dollars that you specified from the bonds. And then there is some more, some additional work that we need to do on the stadium, primarily renovating the wooden seats, which are very dangerous and people are about to fall through, they're out of code. We would do aluminum bleachers, we're adding new plazas and sidewalks to fix tripping hazards and make access to the site better. We're adding some bathrooms and doing some other additions, cleaning up the stadium, potentially putting a new roof on the stadium if we need to. But we assessed our estimate on that a little bit more and we assessed it with a local contractor who we, you know, feel like good about these numbers. Those numbers actually came down a couple of hundred thousand dollars. So potentially, if we do everything as we would like to, we're still a little over the two million or two point one, I think, that you've approved, but we don't know exactly what those numbers are coming in, but we are close to the ballpark, that we could make some changes if we have to to those plans, if that's the desire from a budget standpoint, although don't know that it would be recommended at this point. You've got a facility there that needs a lot of work and once it's upgraded, I think can be a real asset as an economic development engine for the county. So, but today, I think the thing that I'm recommending is we go ahead and accept that, the bid from N.K. Stubbs contractors and immediately do a value engineering change order, deductive change order for the amount of four hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Alright, this has been properly moved by supervisor Milton and properly seconded by supervisor Hutchins to accept and reduce change order.
Pending legal review, I've not gotten back with Tom, I've called him, he called me back once and I've called him a couple of different times, I still would like to find out.
Pending legal review according to the term, alright, y'all get the motion? You got, but it's gone, we are, it's been moved by supervisor Milton and seconded by supervisor Hutchins to accept the reverse change order.
Of phase one.
Of phase one.
To one point four.
To one point four.
Three eight.
One million four hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty would be the new price starting.
Pending legal review. Alright. Will there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sound of "aye", and opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried now.
Yeah, we need the actual bids, the bids.
Yes, what I'll do is I'll get everything together as far as this and the V.E. so that we have the changes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Scott, I'm gonna stay until after the meeting so we can talk to you.
Alright, next, departmental reports.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Joe Belling with the Intervention Court here in Adams County, Six Judicial District, and I submitted a request for budget increase to purchase three different items. First is to pay Harbor House for treatment of one of our participants that's in the program. That money will be reimbursed by the AOC. The amount was four thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty cents. They just need the paperwork from the county and then they'll reimburse us on that. Should be a copy of the invoice for the treatment on that participant in there.
Is this invoice for treatment or this is for future treatment?
No, this is for a treatment that's already in there right now.
Somebody's already in there getting services, you need a court order to approve that treatment? The board cannot approve something retroactive.
I'll speak to the judge about it.
Is that something that's already in your budget?
No, it's not in the budget, that's what I'm saying, I need the money put in the budget so I can submit it to the AOC so they'll reimburse us.
The invoice is for something that's already happened?
Yes.
Okay, you cannot do that, you can't retroactively approve an invoice. You need a court order to approve that invoice.
Okay.
We can still approve the budget increase, but to approve that invoice, we need a court order because it's already happened. Y'all can approve the budget expenditure, but until we get a court order to be effective, pay that invoice, we can't pay it. Y'all can't pay things that are already...
That's right.
Retroactively.
Yes, yes, yes. And what was that amount?
Four thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty cents.
And you're saying, once you get a court order, just we'll be, when we are pulled it, AOC will reimburse?
Yes.
Okay, so. Let's do it all at once, yeah.
Okay, the next one was for drug testing supplies. I talked to the company that we've been using and they agreed to come down on the price, not much, twenty-five cents per cup. If we purchase more at one time, currently we'll purchase the two hundred that are lasting about thirty to forty days. We're asking to purchase one thousand to, while we can submit to AOC to get reimbursed for the money before the end of the fiscal year with AOC, which is June the 30th.
We used the purchase, how many, twenty-five?
No, we used the purchase in two hundred. Two hundred at seven fifty a piece, so it's fifteen hundred dollars every time I order. And they've agreed to come down to seven twenty-five if we order five hundred or a thousand, so I'm asking to order a thousand while we can get the money reimbursed from AOC under this year's budget.
And we do use that amount and AOC is gonna be reimbursed, but it's also...
Yes.
Okay, but the next one.
Okay, the next one is, we're asking for equipment, new desks for myself, Ms. Perry, our case manager, and two credentiahs, office chairs. Ms. Perry doesn't even have a desk in her office, she has a small desk, probably just a little bit wider than this podium, and she's using a pickling table to store her printers on right now. We're asking to get two desks and two credentiahs, some office chairs for offices, which is reimbursable by AOC.
You got a price on that?
Sorry.
How much is gonna cost?
Six thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
Six thousand nine hundred and fifteen, one before that was how much?
Seven thousand two hundred and fifty.
Seven thousand two fifty, thank you. So, is it all, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all, been properly moved by supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second? Second by supervisor Milton, will there be any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
We, they said we're gonna have to put this in their budget and then if we're gonna be reimbursed, reimbursed on this eighteen thousand dollars.
Yes, I can buy AOC.
So yeah, he'll spend the money.
Right, we have to spend it.
He'll then apply for it and the money will come back to the general fund and then come back into your budget.
Yeah, you're trying to do it before the budget period is over.
End of fiscal year of July 1st, correct?
June 30th. It has to be on the ledger by June 30th.
That's the whole AOC, really, reimbursed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, will there be enough discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sound of "aye", and opposed, may they have the same right.
On these, Mary Kate, on these furniture type things, does that have to be delivered by the end of the year with AOC?
Well, he's gonna have to put it in so that it can be in this year's, in this fiscal year.
But if it's not delivered by, if it's delivered in July?
If it comes at the end of July, it'll come out of the next AOC budget. I'm trying to, right now, we've only used sixty-four percent of the budget they've provided us.
If you talk to AOC, make sure that you don't have to deliver the furniture before the end of the year, actually physically have it.
Where are you getting it from?
Kimbrel's.
Oh.
Oh, former Kimbrel's.
Because sometimes with AOC, they want the actual stuff there with a photo that you received it.
It'll be fine, they'll be fine with that.
They have me stuck.
She has to order it here, I don't know if they're gonna have it in Stockton Jackson or not.
Something you need to find out.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, because...
Pay six thousand dollars and not yet.
No, today's the fifth, I think you have time to do it. Sometime it takes six months to get something in. Well.
We're trying to get it under this budget year that ends June the 30th. If not, we have a new, we're getting more money from them for next year, it would just come out of next year's budget.
Yeah, just confirm that if we order it and pay for it this fiscal year, it's okay. It can actually have to be delivered, because if it has to be delivered, that might be an issue. See what I'm saying? If they physically want that desk there, that could be, because they may not have it before the end of the year. And that happens to us on a different AOC project, that's a lot of...
The final thing that I have is a, last time we were, if y'all met, you asked for a court order for the Sams dot bill grant.
I got it in my hand.
And we've made the changes on it and now Ms. Mary Kate's been helping us.
Yeah, well, boy, if you remember last time, they wanted to remove Ms. Fellers Wiley and appoint you?
Yes.
To take a minister of the grant, but you know, we have to have a court order, I do have a court order in my hand, so I need a motion to remove Ms. Fellers Wiley and appoint Ms. Fellers so they can admit, so he'll be the grant manager. And we asked for a court order last time, I have a court order in my hand. So can I get a motion? Been properly moved by supervisor Milton and properly seconded by supervisor Hutchins, will there be any discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sound of "aye", and opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried now.
Thank you.
Alright.
Randy is sending you that over right now? If there's more, you just fill it out, I want you to sign.
Good morning. Mary Kate, Department of Adams County Youth Courts. I have a few things today, I have approved, travel to be approved for four people, T.F.A.L.'s, Hollis Hunt, Terrence Hunter, and myself going to the national conference in Houston. That should all be in your folder. That is all grant reimbursed.
So, Ms., have you, you said, Ms., what was it, Hollis?
Hollis Hunt?
I got it.
T.F.A.L.'s? Terrence Hunter and myself.
If I have two of them, I have yours and Ms. Hunt in my travel folder, but I don't...
As I'm all ready, said Corvax, so she probably has a copy of them.
Do you have a cup?
No, me either, I can get it to you.
I do have Mr. Hollis right here, make sure.
What do you have?
Terrence Hunter.
Terrence Hunter, okay. Who are we missing?
Have yours, Ms. Hunt, and Mr. Hollis. Let me make sure they got that.
So T.F.A.L.'s is who you're missing.
Well, I'll make sure. We brought this, I do have...
Tia was the first one I turned in, it actually might have gone through the last board meeting.
I did went to the last meeting.
I'm just curious, I mean, I turned hers in first, because then the board, the grant came to me and told me that I had permission to send three more people, so...
Okay, well, hers I didn't approve.
That may be why it's not in there, so I'll turn it over. At the last meeting.
On the last meeting, I just, we haven't checked the record.
Alright.
We have grant approval to, um, in a DCP conference in Houston, Texas. Mr. Terrence Hunt, Mary Kay Dora, and Ms.
Mr. Hollis Hunt.
Hollis Hunt. I do have their paperwork, uh, in hand. Can I get a motion for travel? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Middleton and properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Will there be any discussion? Uh, discussion, uh, that we found out is possibly, uh, she possibly got, uh, approved, one of them last week.
The last meeting, possibly?
Oh.
So, we're gonna check on that. I do have it, if not, and it's also grant approved to reimburse.
Judge Jones, twenty-fifteen, November thirtieth. So, when we.
We already had it.
Already had it, okay.
Okay, well, there'll be no more discussion. All in favor, vote by you. Sign a "I." Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carried now.
All right, next I have, um, the grant that we partnered with Workforce Development, Tawana Fuller Williams. Um, we received it. We were awarded it, so I have the award letter I would give you for the minutes. It is a grant through CNPDD, and it is a mentoring grant. Um, the grant will automatically renew for two more years, two more consecutive years, so it's a total of three years, five hundred thousand dollars. Hundred and fifty-six thousand for the first year, and we, first year, we will serve twenty people ages seventeen to twenty-four. Mentoring grant, it's a mentoring and job grant, a workforce grant, so we'll be able to hook some people up with some jobs. So, I will give that to y'all for your records.
Is there any reimbursement?
It is a reimbursement grant, yes. We sell, we.
Is there any match on some sort of?
No, no match. Um, the other thing, I will need a, um, a fund assigned to it, fund number assigned to it. I don't, I have a budget that I will.
You got first, wait, then we got one.
I don't, I don't have the budget yet for that.
We have the motion, except we have a motion made by Supervisor Hutchins. Now we need a second. Second.
Second.
Okay. Supervisor, uh, seconded by Supervisor Gray. We accept the grant. Any more discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you. Sign a "I." Any opposed, may they have the same right.
I don't have any of the paperwork to be signed yet. They just sent me a letter that it will be starting July one. So that will be coming. I need a fund number issued to it.
Okay, we just need a motion to set up a separate file for, uh, receipt of grant for this grant.
All right, we need a motion to set up a file to receive this grant, a separate file. So again, a motion, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Middleton. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Gray. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you. Sign a "I." Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carried now.
Okay, next. I have lots of things, sorry. Uh, the next I have the COVID funds that y'all are approved for me to apply for, um, that we received. Uh, for ten thousand dollars. It has to be spent by the end of this month, June thirtieth. Uh, but I need a fund number so that I can spend the money. We, it was suggested to use Fund One Thirty, and I do have a budget ready if that's approved.
One Thirty looks like it's approved, approved.
So do I need a motion? So I need a motion, they're properly moved by Supervisor Middleton. Properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Um, if there be any more discussion, if there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by you. Sign a "I." Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carried now.
The only other thing I have, and I don't know if it needs a vote or whatever, but as, to follow behind with, uh, Joe Belling of the Adult Drug Court. They've asked me, Judge Drake has asked me to help them with, uh, getting the drawdown funds and everything, with getting the SAM.gov, which you just approved, to sign that court order. I will be assisting them and helping them pull those funds down to get Fund One Twenty-five out of the hole, cause that's where, what's happening right now. Cause we haven't been able to get in there. So, I'm gonna be assisting them. She did mention that she would like to contract pay me for it, but we have not negotiated any of that yet, so I'm just putting that out there.
Mary Kay, did you have this, uh, transfer on these professional supplies that you?
For what fund?
It was, uh, One Nineteen, Two Twenty-three.
Yes.
Okay.
So I need that done too.
Yep, just transferring two hundred and thirty dollars from Fund One Nineteen, Two Twenty-three, excuse me, from One Nineteen, Two Twenty-three, Six Ten, to One Nineteen, Two Twenty-three, Five Eighty.
You heard them quick. Can I get a motion?
So.
They're properly moved by Supervisor Middleton.
Second.
They're properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. If there be any discussion, if there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by you. Sign a "I." Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carried now.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, next, Department of Labor report.
Morning, Ian.
Good morning.
Uh, I have a travel request for Bree Cooks, uh, Connie Mason, and Billy Humphries. It's for Emergency Services Administrator, Administrative Professional Association, uh, Twenty Twenty-Three Annual Conference, September the sixth through the eighth, at Biloxi, Mississippi. And registration was a hundred and fifty dollars, and meals, if you have three days, forty-six dollars.
I do have the paperwork in my hand, so you'll read them out. Connie Mason.
Connie Mason, Billy Humphries, and Bree Cooks.
And Bree Cooks. I do have. So I need a motion to approve the travel.
So.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you. Sign a "I." Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carried now. All right, thank you.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Levis.
And it fails for the nine-one-one dispatch. Um, I'm requesting for travel for the same conference that they are going to, from September the sixth through September the eighth, for the ESAP conference that they are going to, just approved.
I have the paperwork in my hand. You heard the request.
So moved.
Sir.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Will there be any discussion? The time. All right, all in favor, vote by you. Sign a "I." Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carried now.
Okay, um, also, I wanted to spread across the minutes again, we're bringing up about the nine-one-one. Um, our goal was to wait till, if or when we move our building, or we get new equipment, so we can save county money. Um, we was told that after so many years that the equipment be at the end of life. So, we're at that point now where it's critical, because we, we have equipment that's starting to malfunction. So, we're getting quotes to see how much it costs for, uh, a new recorder, which is eight years old. Um, also, some of the other equipment that we have in there is starting to, uh, malfunction as well. So, we are asking the board if they could, could we kind of move forward with, uh, decision of what we're gonna do about the building, or moving, or whatever, so we can know what to do from there.
Regardless, we've got, so you get this new equipment at any rate. So, whether you stay in place or whether you put in a new place, you're gonna have new equipment, and it happens once every seven years. It's about right. They're getting quotes. We'll find out what, what they are. They're gonna be pretty high. Uh, you know, I'm always shocked by the cost of what they are. Typically, in the past, we've done this for lease purchases. Um, but, if you're gonna move, you know, you don't wanna move, pay to have this equipment moved. You don't like to move it, have the equipment, you know, purchased and bought, and then, I think as you said, at the emergency meeting, we just switch over. From, you know, one day you show up at the new place, and you switch it over. I think that's the smooth transition for it. But we need a cost of the equipment, so, so you'll get that to us.
I thought I gave it to you already, for the lease purchase.
I need a cost of, how much the equipment costs, total.
Without the.
And then we have to go through the lease purchasing bid procedure, and just lease purchase from that.
Okay.
All right, uh, well, Scott, you, I mean, Ms. Levis, did what you plan on what the trial said?
Yes, we gave him some figures before, but he's saying we need some more. You know, the more we late, waiting, waiting this more.
He gave you an estimate. I thought, you said you were gonna give me an up-to-date.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you up-to-date more.
Okay, well.
That wasn't anything, like, I thought we talked about that last meeting, and actually had a figure.
That wasn't me. Bar Cheek got his big.
Bar Cheek had, had a, had a figure. I knew something like that.
Okay, well, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll move on. If you get an up-to-date, uh, price on the equipment, and you give it to the attorney, and we'll move forward, uh, as a side of board, we'll, we'll look at it on next year.
Okay.
All right? Okay, next, Department of Labor report.
Good morning. I have three personnel transactions that need to take place. Uh, I'm promoting one of my employees from a regular officer to a shift supervisor. Uh, it's gonna be a slight increase in pay for her. It's already in the budget, cause somebody left due to the market, you know, they're pulling my people out to do some of these other prisons, uh, so.
Do I have, do I have the paperwork?
Yeah, you do. Charleston Beckham.
All right, who's next?
Uh, Jakarta Winston is being hired. His pay will be twelve thirteen.
Twelve thirteen?
You think you're double one?
Uh, twelve fifty-seven, uh, twelve fifty-seven.
He's going to make it seven person?
Yes.
And the third one, the new hire, Courtney Jackson, twelve dollars an hour.
Oh, done. Got it. Twelve, uh, okay, I got, I do have this paperwork. We have Courtney Jackson as a new hire. You have a rate increase on Charleston Beckham to twelve dollars fifty-seven cents. And you have a new hire at Jakarta Winston at twelve thirteen an hour. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, you heard the, um, request. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Will there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by you. Sign a "I." Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carried now. Next, Department of Labor report.
Morning, boys.
Good morning.
First thing I have, I have a piece of equipment that's gonna go back in the buyback on nine nineteen of twenty twenty-three. I was asking the boys, could I go ahead and start putting some specs together to replace a piece of equipment?
You heard the request in the room, man?
Some of them.
They're properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, properly seconded by Supervisor Middleton. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you. Sign a "I." Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carried now.
Uh, next thing I have, Ms. Hutchins, which you already know, South Palestine is finished, uh, we got a lot of happy people, uh, in that area. Some of them said it wasn't far enough, but that's what we could do at this time.
We're still working on it. We just need some more funds.
Uh, the sign project that, uh, the state was doing for Kingston Road, we've received all the signs. They came to stake them all out. We started last week putting the signs up, so that should be completed probably at the end of this week.
Got a question, Robert. When is, when is the next, uh, sign project? When can you tell for another?
I'll ask him and see. You know, I tried to. Once he did this one, he thought I needed to wait, because they give you that accident report on those other roads, and typically, we're discussing Forest Drive and some of those roads too, and the sign project.
Okay.
But, uh, I'll ask him and find out. Uh, all y'all received emails on the cleaners and the hangers. Okay, um. I'm gonna try to set up a meeting with, uh, engineering firms, on these some EWP, the groups that we've done. I know JKS has got group two, group three, which Camo's got group two, HOPE had group three. We need to go ahead and get those monthly listings finished before the county can get reimbursed. Um, I have sent out email after email, and ain't getting anything set up at the moment. Uh, I might have to go by and visit with them, so we need to wait and get our reimbursement. We need to move forward with these projects and things on those. Um, Kevin's not here. Speed, Hudson, Brokery, they started today installing those, uh, in the Brokery area. Present gains, you should have, uh, Michael Mitchell's retirement letter.
I do.
In front of you. His last day appointment will be June the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. He retired.
Yes, I do have it. Uh, it says, I wanna say thank you to the Adams County Board of Supervisors for employing me for over twenty-five years, working with the men and women within Adams County Road Department. It's been an honor. I will be retiring as of June twenty-ninth. Please accept my resignation. My last day will be June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Sincerely, Michael Mitchell Senior. I do have it now. I need a motion to accept.
So.
And properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and properly accepted by Supervisor Gray. Will there be any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, what, what position was he at?
He was grass covered.
Okay.
So, will there be, uh, will there be no more discussion? All in favor, vote by you. Sign a "I." All, any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carried.
Last thing I have, uh.
Mr. H, I have to cut you off, but you need to.
Yes, I do.
You need, now can I get a motion to allow him to hire to replace Supervisor Mitchell? If they're properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins to be able to replace, uh, Mr. Mitchell, will there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by you. Sign a "I." Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carried now.
Last thing I have, Professor Gaines, um, I've got, received a phone call from you, now I received a phone call from a resident on, uh, Oak Park. Um, I did speak for that resident. Uh, he's wanting to put up a privacy fence, but, um, he was saying that neighbors yard, and I went by and took a picture. I don't think it's to the point of being adjudicated law at this moment, but like I said, I'm gonna work with him on how far he can go out to the street with his privacy fence.
I need to talk to the attorney, um, Riley about that. I think as long as it's not affecting the county road, am I correct? He can come, uh, pretty close, so you know, as long as you have a roadway, you come cut if you cut grass and bring the privacy.
I, I give him twenty foot from center line to there, but I told him I'd look at it, see if he'd come a little cut. He wanted to try to see if he could come on out as far as he could, like I said, he is.
Yeah, yeah, I did talk to the attorney.
And he, he does have to know too, if at some point it did affect the county roadway, the county didn't have to get permission. They could say, look, I'm gonna move your, so, it's always best to keep it, but, you know, it's just something you can work out, you know, in certain markets.
That's all I have this morning.
And, and I have any questions, um? Yes.
Uh, I spoke to Mr. Dollar last week. The gentleman that was here last meeting called me last week about, uh, storing, renting that property, parked that equipment. I asked Chandler whether that affects, or your options and whatnot, you got Mexican. Yeah. He'll be able to get back to me. Yeah, he's, called me a bunch of times. Okay. Just wanted to follow up.
Okay. Thank you.
He called me this morning.
Well, I, I think I, Mr. Dollar.
No.
But I did have, well, I know I kind of do have got permission on last week for the, uh, the tire grant, I just see this in my phone again, so just to be on the safe side, get the reimbursement, and I think I signed, I think it's the same thing.
We talked about the other day, it's signed, I think that's the one, I, she didn't mention this morning that it was something else today, so I think she signed the other day.
I don't know, but.
If not, we're saying.
She had said this, but she thought that we were gonna be able to do it in the, maybe second meeting, realized that it was a special meeting, so I told her that, we couldn't since it was a special meeting, so it's, so it's gone. Then it's something different, we need to sign this.
Okay, I'm, uh, asked for a motion to sign a reimbursement, uh, for the tire grants, like, uh, dollars of the grant, forty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars, and the reimbursement. The amount of the repayment request is twenty-nine hundred dollars, twenty-nine sixty, twenty-nine hundred sixty-one dollars. Can I get a motion, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and seconded by Supervisor Gray, would there be any more discussion? All in favor vote by you to have an Aye, any opposed names have same right emotional carry now.
And, and Mr. President, it's a request for reimbursement, it's not budgeted, so wouldn't it proper that if you went ahead and sent her, not a problem?
Yeah.
Only got to get them reported on the minutes.
Yeah. Well, once I, we speak to our minutes, so you ain't doing wrong if you record all the minutes.
Absolutely, no, no, never a problem, but we previously said we're okay getting.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, next.
Yeah.
Good morning, board, uh, just a couple of updates, um, D W P projects for Magnolia Blood sites two and three, as well as Lincoln Heights, the bid opening will be on July third at ten o'clock A M, uh, during July third, board meeting. Um, the Strifing Project, S A B, S A P O one nine and whole M, um, their, state lady's still waiting on the, uh, check to be read, once they get that check, they will approve the, uh, contract.
From the county, is this check from the county? I tried to wait for it.
They, they had a check from the county.
I, I've talked to Mr. Dixon this morning, he said as a product.
He has not received it. What, what happened? What? She just didn't get it, so it's coming, so y'all can.
Okay.
Okay, so.
It's been a problem. We need to.
Or something else, so y'all can.
Yeah.
Um, we're visiting Morgantown Road to determine if there are any adjustments can be made. Uh. They could be made, any adjustment can be made to the current, uh, design, to try to reduce the cost, uh, for the project, and, um, I'll come up with any kind of findings, and we'll be back before the board to let, let you all know. Um, and the last thing I have is, um, the M C W I grant that was submitted for Deerford Road, uh, it was approved and received a sub-award agreement, um, the total project cost was estimated at forty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars, with fifty percent being paid by the M C W I grant, and the county responsible for the other fifty percent. Um, we have the subcontract agreement that needs the signature of a board president in order to, uh, execute the project.
Okay, and that's that project on Deerfield Road, so they gonna pay fifty percent and we are liable to pay the up fifty percent?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Second, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by Supervisor Gray, would there be any discussion? Would there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by you to sign a Aye. Any opposed names have same right emotional carry now.
Finally, any additional questions from your wall up here?
Uh, I don't know, did you get the information I sent you on that grant?
Yes, I had the plot, so Mr. Dollar sent me the roads that you guys wanted to have that, uh, grant plot.
Yeah, the, uh, dangerous roads, which you expect that we had at last meeting, okay, would you give it to him, Mr. Dollar?
I got right here with me, I just want y'all to be here and discuss it.
I think we already discussed it on last meeting, you had, you, you, uh, read them out of your report last meeting, it was, uh.
Morgantown Road, Kingston. Cranfield and North Palestine.
And North Palestine, we discussed it on last meeting, yes.
That's on the Strifing.
That was the grant, that I, remember I found a grant that for the dangerous roads, I explained to y'all, even when I told y'all, there was a, a grant out there, but they had farms, but. Dangerous roads that had dangers, and Mr. Dollar had looked up specs, stuff like that, and I asked the engineer, would he have, uh, could we, I asked the board permission for the engineer to apply for.
Okay, and what roads is that going on being?
Uh, and this is coming, like I said, from M dot, on there, uh, it's Morgantown Road, Kingston Road, Liberty, Cranfield, and North Palestine.
Yeah, we had to have, so that, so we had already approved it, so they just need to change information, all right, that's, that's all I have for you, anybody have anything for the engineer? Be no more, thank you, Mr.
I appreciate your observations all the way.
Thank you. Department of Reports, next.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
And, uh, three hundred and thirty-eight nine-one-one service requests, two hundred and forty-nine transports, that's an uptick of about seventeen transports, which is good, that's kinda what we wanna see, is people calling us and actually going to the hospital. Average response time in the city is eight minutes, seventeen seconds, with ninety-one percent compliance, and the county fourteen seventeen, fourteen minutes, seventeen seconds, ninety-four percent compliance. Uh, thirty-eight refusals for treatment, that, that, that dropped from fifty-five from the previous month, so the medics are really actively engaged in trying to compel those people to go to the hospital. Uh, twenty-two, no patient contacts, that also dropped and improved, which is good because we consider those false calls, uh, thirteen canceled prior to arrival, uh, the psych calls continue to drop for the month, we dropped by four from the prior month, we're at fourteen right now for the, the May data. Two hundred and forty-seven multiple ambulance calls at the same time from nine-one-one. The, uh, medical flights from the field were five, and each of those patients were high-level patients that were either stroke or trauma patients that required other than service available here. Continue to have hospital holds, we spent a hundred and forty-seven hours and forty-four minutes on the wall babysitting patients instead of getting them off of our gurneys, that impacted one hundred and forty emergency responses for the month. So in other words, that truck, had it been cleared appropriately, would have been closer to an emergency and would have improved the response time. So those impacts are trying to hit us, they're pretty hitting us pretty hard, this month alone, it cost me twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars in payroll to babysit patients on the wall at the hospital. Uh, zero crew members out with COVID in fourteen, so we continue to press forward, do what we do, and try to do it better each month. Y'all have any questions on that piece for me?
No, uh, board, do you have any questions, yes, there's supervisor.
So. Would you say, uh. How many people been getting COVID that you know of, not that many?
It's, it's almost nonexistent, uh, it's, yeah, literally, you can track them in single digits for the county each month, and there's not even, it's not even a, a hundred percent declaration that it is COVID, it's respiratory-like symptoms, it's so small, in fact, right now, that that's what they're doing, they're just, they're, they're writing them as upper respiratory infections. So, uh, it's, it's almost nonexistent.
So could you stop by my mama house and let it go back?
So, uh. Have y'all have any other questions on this, I want to give y'all a quick update, we met last week, Scott was in attendance with the E nine-one-one board, as y'all know, I served on that with the advisory board, uh, unfortunately, they elected Ms. Chairman, I'm not sure why, I've been trying to get that up there since they did. Uh, just to let y'all know kinda where we at, I know initially when we first came in, we were having a lot of issues with people that were giving negative feedback on the negative experience of nine-one-one, and y'all tasked us to take care of that issue for y'all and get it off, get it off the rail, and make it go away, fix the problems. I think all the chiefs working together like that, we were able to successfully do that, because we just don't hear those complaints coming before this board, or in being, you know, fun for us, for us to address either, so I think we're doing a really good job of mitigating that. This move or this equipment update, these are the two items that we've kinda selected as an advisory board to kinda make priority items, because if we're gonna take the next evolution in nine-one-one, uh, these are both items that have to be addressed. Um, and that's also items that have been kinda, that thing that's been nagging at y'all now since we took the other thing off, so I do appreciate y'all's, y'all's trust in us and what we're doing, and I do appreciate y'all's review and consideration of the letter that we, that we drafted and supplied, uh, to Scott to give both city and county boards on. Um, at, at any point in time where y'all have questions for us, please, you know, Scott's got each one of our email addresses, several of y'all do, just let us know, we more than happy to come and do a presentation and discuss that with y'all, and try to add some additional justification for what we're wanting to do with this next evolution. Uh, and the equipment being old and outdated is an opportune time for us, I think Scott even referenced it a while ago, um, anytime you're moving this, this, this is a critical infrastructure, nine-one-one is, and anytime you're updating equipment and you're moving in conjunction with that, it offers you a unique opportunity to take and go dead at one console and the next split second be live at the new console. So that's the whole intent of us trying to kinda come back before the board regular, and I ask that we, you know, consider what we're gonna do, I believe the city brought forth a thing that we have asked that Waycaster maybe do an assessment of not only the current structure, but the structured, structure that we're proposing, and the reason that we ask for that is because it obviously gives y'all the ability to justify those dollars that y'all are agreeing to spend. So that assessment will be an apple-for-apple comparison versus we think it might be, and it should ought to be, it's gonna be an actual comparison, so I think that was a good move, uh, the entire board was in support of that, and we put that in the letter as well. Uh. Back, y'all have any questions other than that? I have one more thing, uh, Bobby, I mean, Robby and them kinda put me on the spot, but I wanted to go ahead and, they, they put me on the spot, because I'm gonna be down there next week, and I'm gonna speak on behalf and represent Adams County at the County Road Managers Association Conference, uh, I'm gonna be their guest speaker. Uh, as y'all well know, we try to integrate ourselves, we do a really hard, y'all be a really hard push to make sure that we're serving all areas of our county. Uh. Just so y'all know, it took a lot for me to say yeah to do that, because I'm gonna have to probably maybe wear a suit and tie, and I don't do that too much neither. But what I want y'all to know is the things that we put together for that presentation and that I'm gonna do at that meeting are things that we've already been integrating in this county, and I don't think that they do it in other counties. And that's why it was uniquely kinda an opportunity for me to go and speak, is because those other road managers aren't doing a lot of the things that Robbie's already doing in his department here, and we're already doing as an EMS resource for the community here. So I just kinda wanted to let y'all know, if any of y'all wanna come and listen to me stutter and go, and um, y'all be more than happy to, because that'll give me somebody to look at out in the audience that I actually know, and I'll probably stare at you the entire time. That's the end of my report, I appreciate y'all.
We appreciate it.
Mr. President, thank you.
Absolutely.
Uh, Tim, Rain has sent over a next fiscal year's budget over to a net.
Okay.
Um, make sure that y'all, that, that the advisory board fills that out and gets it sent back over to us before July one.
We'll schedule a meeting and go ahead and get on it now.
If you're asking for more money, which is what it sounds like with equipment and all that, that would be within that budget.
Yeah, and we're gonna, I, I think that the discussion that we had last week with the equipment is due to the, the upgrade and the timeline and everything that's taking place, it's, I'm not sure the equipment's gonna cost us more, I think in fact, there's actually an opportunity out there for it to cost us less while upgrading to the latest equipment that goes on fiber optics, so we're gonna be looking at all of that, and I'll get, I'll send out an email today and get all the board members together where we can kinda look at that and.
We just need to know how much we need, we can afford that to our partner at the city and get that, keep that within their purview, because they're also gonna be questioning.
Okay.
You need to have that.
Question, uh, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Legal Counsel, and, uh. We in the process of, uh, buying a new building and, and moving E nine-one-one over to this new building with new equipment, my question is, is the city on board with doing exactly what we gonna do? With, with moving E nine-one-one to this new building?
They have not indicated that they're on board with buying a new building, the advisory board, which includes the chiefs, has requested that we, uh, look at the feasibility of the current, of, of upgrading the current facility or getting this new facility upgraded, that's what the advisory board is supposed to do, and that's what we pursue at this point. And the equipment cost, again, they're asking that we get new equipment and getting that cost cover to us, but the city has not been on board to getting new building.
My, my main concern is the employees, uh, um. If we move over to this new building and, 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 uh, move E nine-one-one, are they gonna wanna take employees? That's what I'm asking.
Their current plan is for the employees to stay the same, but if the city's not on board with matching our costs, the board can always opt out of that continuing joint agreement.
So, don't you think we need to, um. Get a commitment one way or the other, and then we go buy a new building, then all of a sudden, they got dispatches over here, we got dispatches over here, and, and now we don't bother a new building, and we, we don't even have nobody to put in the building?
Either way, we're gonna need new equipment, and if that building is not a, a location where y'all wanna be moved, it would be a location for another county.
I'm saying employees, I know we need new equipment, but are we gonna have the number of employees? If they decide to split this up, are we, are we gonna need that much equipment for the few employees that we gonna have?
Uh, is the equipment amount gonna stay the same, probably not.
Well, let me, let me, let me just say this, the, the, the request to get Waycaster to do an assessment is for exactly that reason, Supervisor Gray, we're, we're wanting y'all to have that apple-to-apple comparison, because one way or another, we can all agree, there have been multiple discussions in these board meetings, that the current, the current location of nine-one-one is no longer serving the needs of nine-one-one. It, it is outgrown and it is outdated, and there are, there are actual issues and concerns that we have all, are all aware of, being documented there, so by asking that Waycaster come in and, and do this assessment to fix that, how much is that dollar, and then what would be the dollar if we went to a new location, just simply took advantage of the fact of the timeline, that we're actually getting new equipment and put it into that new location, so that we can see what the delta between those two are, because if Waycaster comes back and says it's gonna cost us a million to redo this building, which we already know we're fixed in, and then we go over here and he's saying it's gonna cost us six hundred thousand, there's a four hundred thousand delta right there that we can say, this is the reason we're asking for this. I don't think discussions the other day from both the, the, the fire chief and the police chief in that meeting was that the city had those doubts about the purchase of a building, and that's, this is why we came up with the whole idea that we get that request from Waycaster, that, that, so that we could compare, so that y'all would be equipped to meet with the city board with your, with your counterparts, with the city, and have the actual data in your hands to say, well, this is the study, this, this is it, this is where it's gonna be.
Mr. President, this is my last response, but we, we need, as a board, we need to do something because we gonna hit with demands from the city, from other stuff that they want from us, and we gonna want them to pay their fair share, and we, we not gonna pay it off, we, we, we just want them to pay their fair share, so if they not gonna, if their plans is, is to say, well, we just take our dispatches and put them back over there, and we keep ours, then we need to know that, that's all I'm asking.
President, now. We have asked, I guess, the last two meetings about setting a meeting with the city, are they on board with that, because the last meeting that we had on recreation, we asked that they meet with us also on this E nine-one-one.
Yeah, they don't, you don't need it on.
They do not wanna meet on now, E nine-one-one, but they wanna meet on everything else, my thing is we need to know what they're gonna do, what their obligations are, and what they're gonna do, because like Supervisor Gray said, they are coming with other things, like fire and everything, that they wanna meet with us on, so they need to meet with us on E nine-one-one too, uh, we don't have any other meetings for them, I.
And, 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 and if we give raises, we gotta give E nine-one-one raises, but they, all the county employees need a raise, so that's something we need to get straight.
And nine-one-one advisory board actually recommended.
Yeah, and there's, there's this one thing that's out there that we still don't know where it's actually gonna impact, and that's that, the, the changes with the cell phone charges, we don't know what that dollar amount's gonna be yet, so, you know, I, I, I do not like kicking the can, I don't like kicking it down the road, you don't do it today, you gotta address it tomorrow, but the reality of it is, is we won't know what those dollars are gonna do for the nine-one-one budget until we actually see those dollars coming in each month. So, so, you know, we, we, we have a whole lot going on at one time, that it's actually, i- if you look at it the right way and you approach it the right way, it's actually opportunistic that it's happening at one time versus, um, causing more headache, so. it's actually opportunistic that it's happening at one time versus causing more headache.
Mr. President, either way, whether we get increase of nine one one funds or not, whatever, we still gotta pay for nine one one to operate actively, and so that really doesn't need to wait long. We need to proceed as to where our expected cost for a nine one one system that we want, that responds correctly to people on a time basis. You know, we need to have that, have that number. Doesn't matter whether we're getting additional tax revenues from that source, because it's gonna come from a different tax revenue source one way or the other.
And we're not planning on coming back. Yeah, the discussion with this, with the advisory board is, we're not looking at tomorrow, and we're not looking at next year. We're looking at ten years down the line. We're looking at a ten year timeline so that we have anticipated the growth and the needs of that facility, once we make that move and make that decision, for that ten year timeline. So, so that we're not coming back instead of going up. We made a mistake, we need an additional twenty by twenty space. We're not doing that, we're taking all of that into account, looking into the future.
And I appreciate that, and continue to do what you do. For my part, I know we need to have what we need in our hand when we do go to negotiate with the city. But, you know, the main thing is, I always said from day one, nine one one has to operate. Nine one one is your police, your sheriff, your fire, and your ambulance. And we gotta make sure those people are provided those, those needs in the county. And so either way it goes, we know the building has been in horrible conditions, and, you know, everybody wanna get out to see it, so we have all agreed on it. So we are gonna move forward, I think, with it, and I think we can get with, as a board, I think we will make the right decision. I think we're working out with the city, even if we have, if we had to take our employees, we still have to come to a better place, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, originally it was.
I understand, but I understand, but I'm saying, we have, even though we have, I don't know, and we'll have more discussion, but I thought we really, we really, we thought about it. We discussed it so long, though, we need to move our employees from where they at to a better space. Okay, well, that's fine, alright. But ain't no more, not, ain't no more discussion, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Departmental reports, Nick.
Good morning, boy.
Good morning.
I've got, right off, we've got a budget increase following on three different items. The first one is budget adjustment from zero zero one, two hundred, six eighty and case of more uniforms than we need at the office. The second, and that was forty five hundred. The second one is zero zero one, two hundred, five oh two. We added other office phones from ceasefire, they were not budgeted. And also, we added some trackers to some of the new vehicles, and it's eight thousand.
Let me see if that's budgeted.
It was not budgeted. The third one is for a thousand dollars. The fund is zero zero one, two twenty, five eighty one. And that's in reference to keeping privileges from other agencies. And it's only a thousand. It's only for one thousand.
And they're just moving, they're just moving money within the same fund.
Right. Brandon has the phone.
With the eight thousand?
Yes, sir. They're just moving it from six eighty to five oh two, so it's moving money within the same funds.
Oh, I didn't see there was not budgeted.
Right, that line item was not, but they're just moving money from another line item to cover the shortfall, so.
And also, on the forty five hundred dollars, zero zero one, two hundred, six ninety one, it's adjusted from zero zero one, two hundred, six eighty.
You got the adjustment?
Yes, I got it already.
You got all of them? So you heard, the county, acting county administrator has the necessary paperwork in hand and has cleared everything with the transfer on the file, so.
So all this money in the budget.
Yeah, it was. It wasn't an increase of new money, it was just a move.
Alright.
So can I get a motion?
So move.
There probably a move by Supervisor Gray, can I get a second? Probably second by Supervisor Milton, but there'll be any more discussion. And there'll be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may have the same right, motion carried, you know.
The last thing I have is the litter, the amount of litter picked up in the county. District one, seventeen bags. District two, sixty seven bags. District three, sixty five bags. District four, twenty eight. And district five, sixteen.
Alright, hey, you don't have a new hire or a correctional?
I don't have any.
He must be him.
What's the name?
Says correctional. That's Christina Green.
I don't have anything on that.
Just a correctional. Alright, okay, well, thank you, Mr. Meehan. Thank you. Departmental reports. Any more departmental reports? There be no more departmental reports, we'll come to the table, start with Supervisor Gray.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Turner, have you looked into Great River? In Martin Town about the increase that those people receiving with their water bills that they're almost done?
Yes, sir, I looked into it. I do need a copy of what they sent to the constituents. What I could find was a recommendation by the Public Service Commission to raise rates. I didn't see an order authorizing that, that raising the rate. I'd like to see a copy of that, so if you could send that to me.
You have to give a copy.
Yes, sir.
So, so I always thought, in order to raise rates, you had to have a public hearing, you have to notify the people in the areas that you raising their rates. Do you know, have there been a public hearing?
The issue Supervisor Gray, it troubles me, is the only notice that I saw in, in that giant file, the only notice I saw was a notice that said they were not raising rates at this time, and now there's a recommendation to raise rates. So I need to see what they've been sent, because it might be a notification that they're going to raise rates. That might be the notice that goes out there, that we can get a response to, to the Public Service Commission.
I'm trying to get one of the bill.
You're absolutely right, there's a public, it is a separate political body that is elected, that decides rates and so forth. And we had been come down and explained, had a company come down and explained, it's not under our jurisdiction, at least, you know, I guess it's really not, but we are highly concerned and doing everything we can to help keep those rates down.
I think, I, Ms. Brenna, I think we need a, I need a financial report on, since this is the end of the year, where, where are we with our finances with the county? Because we getting ready to go into another budget. And I need to know what kind of money that this county has, and, you know, people assinuating all kind of stuff out in the street that we broke, and we this, and we that. I know we not broke, but I need to, I need to know exactly where we are financially. And then, could, could you give me a list of all of the elected officials that donated toward the scholarship fund? And if there's still some out there, they still have time to donate their money? And at the next board meeting, I'm gonna recognize the ones that donate. I got something from the city about roads, have they start overlaying their roads? You know when they gonna overlay? Because I got almost a hundred thousand dollars worth of roads that they want overlay. And I know we have a responsibility to do that, so I, I, uh, need to try to figure this out.
And I hadn't got a clear answer from APAC about the remainder of the funds there. I have spoken to Mr. Gray, he had gotten back, and I called the chat. Superintendent, when it keeps up with the quantities and things like that, throw them on our asshole project. And he didn't have an answer for me either, and that was when he still left the week. For such a dissonant she asked, and I was not afraid my report to ever go bad. I'm glad it brought it, but I did not have a definite answer on the remainder of those funds that was left.
Could you find out when the city actually gonna start, because?
I doubt that, and I didn't get an answer on it.
Some of these roads, like East Hills Lane, they're not gonna do the whole East Hills Lane, and I want me to catch up where they gonna leave off, finish it off. So by the next meeting, I need to find out exactly when they gonna start.
Ricky may not even be, the bid may have been accepted yet.
Well, I just wanna do my part.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I was just trying to listen, they were having trouble with it.
Uh, last, I just wanna congratulate all the high school graduates. I'm just gonna say this, and people gonna have to realize, we dealing with, we in a whole new generation with, with, with all this social media and a lot of stuff going on in other communities, and it's viral, and, and once kids see stuff, we, we in a world where they do what they see other people do. Whether it's good or bad, I don't know. But at the end of the day, you, you don't get to graduate from high school one time. And all the graduates, I'm proud of them, and I know they gonna go on and do great things, and, and, and we can't be so negative to these kids where they don't wanna come back here. They are kids, so they gonna do stuff like kids do. So if we so negative to these kids, when they graduate and go to college and graduate, the first thing they gonna do is don't wanna come home, and we don't wanna make it, where they don't wanna come back home. Last, uh, my sympathy goes out to the Martin family, the Turner family, the Oliver family, Mr. Oliver was a long time educator in his community, the Durkins family, the Watkins family, the Thomas family, the Jones family, and the Willis family. And also, former supervisor, Boo Cam, lost his mom, and she was ninety nine years old. And his sister is my classmate, and Watkins, Samuel Watkins, his son is my classmate. So I had two classmates lose there, there, one lost their dad and the other one lost their mom. And last, I'm looking at this budget calendar. We are in the first of June, and it said, Distributor Departmental Request Phones to the Sheriff and Taxes Collectors and Assessors Office. And I guess it's all of June, I'm just saying, and July first Monday, July deadline for returning departmental requests. I hope all the department heads got that information, because I don't know what kind of budget season we gonna have this season. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Gray, those were, this was emailed out to all the departments last week with a memo that explains to them when everything's due, that they have new modifications, and they have to prepare another form and all that. So, and I, I just told them if they had any questions, just to reach out.
We email them out to them every year like that, but we don't never get them back like we supposed to.
Alright, Supervisor Milton.
Some of the things was taken care of during regular session, but.
Can I interrupt one minute?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Scott, twenty one twenty nine, Second Street, Kyle Graves. Twenty one ten, Robert, Second Street, the grass is growing in the street.
Second Street on Roosevelt?
This, this for Robert, it's second.
Alright, what was it?
Hi, Brad.
First one for you, twenty one twenty nine. The house I showed you?
Yes.
Okay, the second one is for Robert, twenty one ten, Second Street. It's where they got that dip on Second Street, and the, and the grass is growing in the street. And same one, Scott, thirteen murder drive, Kyle Graves.
We're gonna have a bunch of dedications in the next week.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Supervisor Milton.
Like I said, some of the things was mentioned was described in the D F P L project. I was glad to see that we got this D F P L project approved, so I'm gonna, we did make the motion to go in and continue with the, the amount of the fifth percent of the project that county has to pay. So I wanna get that started as soon as possible, maybe remove that money to that, so we're gonna be using a whole forty thousand, we're gonna be using a certain portion of it. So make sure that fund is get moved to the right boss. Also, county administrator, are we gonna do anything about the hiring of the county administrator today? Or we gonna put that?
I have no idea. I do have a, a letter here read out by Andrew Smith, and we're withdrawing his application.
They did withdraw?
I don't know what we gonna do.
Mr. President, I don't mean to cut you off, I'm glad you brought that up. It's gonna be real hard going into a budget without a county administrator, and it's gonna be real hard for somebody to wanna leave their job, to come to a job, where elected officials have six months left on their term. And January, if, if, if we get new supervisors, that individual could not even have a job. So if, if a person got a, a permanent job right now, I don't know nobody in their right mind gonna leave their job, to come to the job, they don't know if they gonna have a job in January. To me, that don't even make sense. It's something we gonna have to deal with.
So maybe we got to.
This is not safe.
I, I think they've done fabulous jobs so far with all that's been put on their plate. I agree with everything y'all are saying. But, you know, you advertise, and you get candidates, and they either back out or they're not qualified, it puts you in a really tough position. I think at this point, with, with where we are in budget season, I think we need to reach out to Joe Wery and see if Joe would come in on a interim basis for his twenty hours a week. I know he does not want the job full time. He has expressed that numerous times, but I think that he would help the county. And I think it's time for us to reach out to Joe and see if he can help us get through this budget year working the minimum hours he can, or maximum hours he can, without affecting his retirement.
I told her, we need to do something, because I take into consideration, I want, we got an elected official that's also in an election. You got a lawyer that has time, he's, he's working with the county in the city, in for itself, and we doing this, so it's putting a lot of pressure on everybody, and budget season is there. So I, I really think that we as a board, we need to reach out to somebody. And I mean, we need to do that this week. Alright, well, let me, now, I'll go back, let me finish your report.
Yeah, okay. Other thing is, financial reports. I do wanna copy of the financial reports also, and you need to probably give it to the whole board and let us see where we are financially. And also, I need a, a, a report on the recreation, where we are, how much money we have, funding we have in the recreation bond, what's left.
And I'll, because I need to do some outstanding deals and things like that on some equipment employees.
Yeah, some of them.
I'll get the check.
And, and make sure when you do that, I would like one, but do them, hey, make sure that you have those individual parks and stuff like we did. I know we had set some out, and we had some left, so make sure that we have those funds separated out like they were.
And I think what Jacquet said was that she and, and Deni had worked together, and they have a spreadsheet that they're going. And I think what I keep said was that she and um and Denise had worked together, and they have a spreadsheet that's going.
That's what we want, yes, right.
Has the whatever balance was for each uh district.
Well, well, my thing is, in that, Scott, that that amount that Scott had gave, that he had those parks, and he had certain amounts in those parks, those was just estimates.
Right.
For the equipment that we had asked for, but it wasn't the true value of what things was gonna be, those were just estimates. So it was no certain amount for each parks, it's just he he wanted it now.
We we had, we had certain estimates out.
Right.
We did estimate on what our stuff would cost and what we saying. And what, well, I'm gonna tell you what I'm saying, is I do know I have uh some of the stuff that we have going in our parks, that I don't have all my stuff.
Right.
That going, I I don't mind if, once I finish my, whatever I need, whatever left, it can go back to use anything else. I just wanna make sure that uh that that I give what I asked for, we have enough. And once I finish getting what we asked for, I'm not, well, you know, I push mine back, but I don't want also that we done looked at everything, and then it came, come up, what I had in the budget to get, then it been kicking away.
No, no, what we had said, and that what we asked for, that's what we supposed to get, everybody's supposed to get.
I'm saying.
As I say, it was estimates, and when you got, it probably fluctuated up some too.
Yeah, because we know it's fluctuating from front.
But I was, that's why I was asking for what is the balance left after all those owes uh or what's there.
And those should be amounts that have been approved by the court for their expenditure, so if there's more, we gotta get increases, budget increases.
That's right, hopefully it's not more, hopefully it's not. Uh another thing is, uh is everybody punching in on these time clocks? How's these time clocks work, I I know about that, but all these other departments with the time clocks? Because I'm still seeing employees going and coming. So we need to find out what's going on with the time clocks.
Keep Brandon over here.
I'll give you that.
No, 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 I'm not talking about your department, because I know how that works, I'm just talking about round, round in this area here. You still see employees going and coming, and you need to know, are they punching in and out? That's something that needs to be known, because I'm gonna probably check it of the employees that I'm seeing that's going and coming. Another thing is, also time clocks for recreation, did we decide that we're just gonna get the time clocks out of the recreation uh at the uh swimming pool for recreation? Uh that we talked about in doing that meeting, getting time clocks out.
Yeah, I mean, they should have time clocks that are in and out, they should be recording your estate. And as an employer, you gotta record your time accurately, federal law requires that. That's what we do, that is with a time clock system, as much as people don't like.
Right, right. I would just wonder, has Brandon got, Brandon's got the time clocks?
I'll ask Brandon.
Okay.
Brandon is also supposed to help you get access of videotapes and so forth, not videotapes, of.
Video. All right, that's all I have.
Supervisor.
Uh a couple meetings ago, we talked about, we approved the paving of the extension office for a line. Uh I guess I could check here, Denise, on that, uh because it has not happened yet. Um Scott, adjudicated properties, three major lane.
Major lane.
It's been handled before.
Can we adjudicate inside the city then?
We cannot, we cannot game inside the city limits.
It getting tight.
Uh the other thing I have on here, as as everyone is very aware of, we're two months out from the election. Uh the more I ride around, the more signs I see in state, county, and city right of ways. There's nothing we can do about city, there's nothing we can do about state, but I'm gonna ask the road department to start picking those signs up. It's it's messy, it's nasty, and and I don't like the way it looks. Uh it causes problems for our grass cutters, uh having to move around and pick them up. It's it's not their job to move campaign signs that are illegally placed in public right of ways.
And we moved some, to piggyback on that, we moved some out of that office, we called them. Uh we talked to Mr. Gardner about when they come to sign up to run for office. Please explain that to them, that when they, it's time, or whenever, to put their signs out to put them off county right of way. And if you put them private property, we should need to have permission to do that, but that has nothing to do with us. But on our right of way, and we've picked up a bunch, uh they are moving them back. Um but it's still being a lot of them put out now, they're just starting again, I guess, another round of it. So we are having problems with it.
Mr. President, uh Mr. Attorney, I mean, it's just so easy to put some, a policy in place, and once somebody decides that they gonna run for office, and they come pick up their form, you give them this about where they can and can't place political signs.
It needs to be, it needs to be signs across the board, not just political, all signs. I know it's mostly political, but you can't put it.
No sign.
By Scott Slender's attorney law, you know, thing.
Well, we need, we need to put it uh.
It's a high distinction.
In place, and and I know this election is is probably over with, the people have picked up everything they gotta pick up, but it need to go to, but the circuit is uh.
Circuit.
Because that's where they pick their information up, because I know that the city, they got something right, and telling you where you can and can't, because they got ordinance inside the city limit, but we need to have something in the county. Because uh a lot of these people are first time, people that's running, and they don't know, you just can't just stick a sign anywhere. So you need to let them know. Thank you.
That concludes my report.
All right, um. Deputy Attorney Paying Dean. Don't have anything. Um, how's County Clerk, Brandon Lewis?
I did just pull up the cash balances on the um recreation bond, and there is three million, one hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and ninety cents left.
You heard, you didn't hear it?
Say it again.
So show me the cash balances.
We didn't hear anything.
Double check all this for bookkeeping and see if there's like some outstanding P O's around, we're gonna show it.
He said three million dollars.
Three million, one thirty-two, nine oh nine ninety, so.
He's gonna be right, that's not right.
Right, so I'm gonna double check.
Rick Ray.
What I'm guessing is that the P O's are out there, but the they, the equipment has not been received, so then it hasn't come off the cash balance, so.
That's the question, because our structures have not been received, so all those structures haven't come off.
Exactly, so so that's why I just sent them a message and asked them to give you the spreadsheet, show me outstanding P O's and that kind of thing. But so that just means that most of it hasn't been received, so.
Yeah.
Um, okay, and, well, wait on that one. I have the meal tracking report for the sheriff's office for May twenty twenty-three that needs to be spread across the minutes.
I heard the request of the County Clerk, uh it's been properly second, I mean, properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second?
Second.
Properly second by Supervisor Gray, the meal tracking report, uh in a discussion, all in favor of vote by you, and sign a I. In a opposed, may they have same right, motion carried, unanimous.
Uh we have an updated modification from Core Civic, uh just need to have that spread across the minutes and authorization for the president to sign that.
You heard the request of the County Clerk, thank you, the most. It's been properly moved by Supervisor. Um, Hutchins, that was you mentioned.
Second.
Okay. Uh properly second by Supervisor uh Gray. Uh in a discussion, there be no more discussion, all in favor of vote by you, and sign a I. In a opposed, may they have same right, motion carried, unanimous.
Uh this is just a reminder to the board, uh Scott, you may have reached out to someone on this about the St. Catherine Creek fertility authority, appointment for the the board. Did you say you had some one minute?
Uh get over some, uh what person that might be interested in doing it, who actually qualified to do it, I can circle back with him, say what he wants to, what he wants to do.
Just fine with, with me, fine with rest of the board, that Scott circled back fine.
I spoke, I spoke with them briefly as well, and we just need to have some conversations.
Okay, if you can remind me and, you know, put the full court pressure on, it's still, because we need somebody to do this.
Okay.
Um. I have the June bonds that you spread across the minutes, that's for Diane Stringer and Sharona Miles, please.
You heard the request of the County Clerk, can I get a most?
A most.
Second.
And second, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and properly second by Supervisor Gray. There be any discussion, all in favor of vote by you, and sign a I. In a opposed, may they have same right.
And I have an item to be determined, um and I work the county administrator thing, I certainly appreciate the board's comments. Um I certainly don't mind, and if y'all have somebody in mind that wants to come in and and to handle the budgeting process, I don't mind staying on to assist with the other parts of it, with the budget items, amendments, personnel issues, things of that sort. But that's certainly obviously the board's prerogative, but just know that I'll I'll be happy to stay on to assist with that, if that helps, with trying to get somebody in just to focus on the budget system. That's all I have.
All right, County Clerk, go.
Just circling back, uh we talked about current, a couple of employee handbook things in the past, and not taking any issue on them, so I'm passing them out again. The one one was, uh your vacation practices, the plan, or what kind of seat, kind of copies that which the state's doing. You keep vacation time up to two hundred and forty hours, and then the remaining kind of time is is turned over to PERS. All of your sick time is turned over uh to PERS. This also, uh it was just a kind of poorly cho- choice word in the policy. It just talks about job separation as opposed to weaving or whatever, there's no difference, if you're separating, you you get the same thing. Um there is a provision about grant employees. Um grants from the state typically do not pay for uh your uh vacation upon job separation. They, uh let that be an exposure or a liability of the county to have to have to pay as a whole. Um and that's fine if the board chooses to do that, if not, the provision that that is in there is basically says, if you are fully funded by a grant, and it's a it's a gap with the the county, that all your time at that point would go to the uh, go to PERS. Um it'd be something that would explain that when you when you do it. In fact, Mary Kate told me, on those type of employees, if she leaves herself, they sign something, knowing on the front end that that's what happens. That's something I never got, you know, we, direction from the board as to whether we wanted to continue paying that liability, or whether we want to uh turn all of their time into PERS, can be either or, uh it would be an additional expense um for the county if we, if we pay that that time that we don't have yet. But I understand that you wanna be treating everyone fairly, so it's just a judgment call from the board. Um another thing is just cleaning up the complaint process that we talked about. And that is, you go, everything, all things will be filed at the County Clerk or Department of State file. That just keeps the time, uh keeps a uniform place of how you file your grievances, as opposed to handing in something or calling or axing or so forth, so it kind of cleans that up. There's a provision about coffee and water, simply saying that that's a uh benefit of being employee, and we'll, housekeeping, tie in on that. Um there's a provision about uh criminal activity, how you should report it, who you should report it to. Um and then uh travel, this is what we're doing, but this actually just reflects what we're currently doing. We encourage people to get reimbursed, because it's just easier for them to go on a trip, come back and sign something and get it. But if they want an advancement, they then have to keep up with all of their receipts. That's already required, but this just puts in our handbook, telling them that this is required for you to do that. And then the second provision, we again have been doing this, but this puts it so it's fair even to everybody. If you are an employee of the county and you become an officer of an association, the court, the board has deemed that that is good for education and so forth, and is willing to pay for seminars and so forth as officers. And it's so that it's fair, and and everyone, anyone that's interested in doing that can go and and do it. So um those are things that we talked about in the past, and I was hoping the board can approve it.
That's also a conversation within the county.
If it's a county, you know, one of those associations, you know, that they do, we we found that is helpful, and so we asked them to.
President, I I I ain't saying I don't trust Scott, but I'm gonna have to take this and read it again to make sure I ain't been approved nothing today. I wanna look at this again, and I don't know if next board be not be ready.
Yeah, and I don't take it as a lack of trust, it's just making sure that I understood what y'all told me right, so I totally, uh no distrust was put up on this end. I will have this at the next board meeting, and hopefully we can close this up at that point. Um there is that one little, little bit of decision that the board needs to make on those uh grant employees, whether you want exposure to.
I I heard you something, say something here about the fatter to in the travel advance, uh and and you did make uh been known in here that only travel advance, that mileage, they do not have to bring any kind of receipt back, because mileage is, that's for them, is just given automatically. Really, the receipts that has to be brought back is, uh if the food, if they get advancement for food, they have to bring that receipt back.
I believe that is what it says, but I was reading.
Or if it's a flight, usually they gonna give a receipt before they even travel anywhere, like you said, like that, follow that.
We'll make sure that that's the standard.
Yeah, yeah, but that's something that's supposed to be audited on.
Right.
It's really, it's just the foods, that if you get that before, you do have to bring those receipts back.
And I think it's on a form, the mileage part of it, and it's, just like I said, it's a set amount, it doesn't matter what cost, if they cost to have that, could cost you twice that.
That's right, it's just, it's just you have to have, for them.
And it should be more than what you pay as gas, because it's also wind and air, and you're. We'll have a lot of uh adjudications next hearing, and hopefully, lots are gonna be called saying, we're getting that cleaned up, and that's usually the case.
Scott, Mr. President, did you check on Ruby Drive, I thought I told you the car?
Yeah, like I said, we're gonna have a bunch of hearings set, and hopefully we'll get, you know, things starting to get cleared up on this end. Later, rest of the board.
Yeah, he'll.
At music.
Move, we do, that was it.
Yeah, that, I, I put in, I don't, but like if the school or bus barn or anybody wants to request from the road department, we have them send an email of something in writing what they want. I just received one, or Mary Ann did before, it could be of the state park, they're asking for a load of pea gravel for a green on bed. They're doing some upgrades to the park. I need some guidance, can we, can we not, I don't know.
I was gonna get back to you.
Okay. But I said, I just gotta, you know, she got it in an email for her request, and, you know.
Yeah, all right, well, I'm gonna start Scott, I'm I'm pretty much sure this is it, because last year we did one twenty-two oldest written. I I I'll go and check today, but one twenty-two, I'm almost sure as it, they just didn't cut the grass. I I was uh through there the weekend riding, checking neighborhood, and I see the grass getting pretty tall.
It's outstanding.
Yeah, one twenty-two oldest written, uh and I kind of touched on it, I'm not gonna read the whole letter, but um Andrew Smith applied for our uh county administrator, he was a previous uh county administrator. And uh he just said, I have to give a considerable thought to my interview, further interviews of expected due responsibility and advertised salary right. I cannot offer my skills, knowledge, experience, and abilities to add to county at this time. I'm currently managing a portfolio of projects and programs that will carry on my continuous environment. I'm also in the process of completing graduate level study of my PhD, and staying focused on my education pursuit uh must be a key priority. So basically, he uh withdrawn his application process, and I just wanted to read your why. So uh that was out. Uh now I need, we we looked at the uh docket, uh that they left off of the docket, everybody look at it, so now I need a motion to.
No move.
They're properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly second by Supervisor Hutchins. Uh would there be any discussion, if there be no more?
Make sure they give me the check, and I'll comment there.
If there be no more discussion, all in favor of vote by you, and sign a I. In a opposed, may they have same right, motion carried, unanimous. All right. Uh it was one for the Sheriff Department. Uh, it was one for the sheriff's department on, on a new hire, uh, paperwork for Hill Miss. Neither I told him I would do it in my report, so this is a Christina in green, uh, correction officer. Uh, I'll be raised on at thirteen twenty-five, and it will be for the sheriff's department. So can I get a motion, I do have a paperwork.
You said that's a new employee?
New hire.
New hire? Okay, is she has experience, this person has experience?
That's basically over there, thirteen twenty-five.
Oh, is it? I thought, okay.
It's a, that's a normal rate now.
That's, that's, that's normal rate.
Okay.
I have no idea.
Is the money in the budget?
Are there replacements on, or they going?
We've had several quit, so, yeah, it's, it's replacement, it's not a new, make it replace.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Then properly moved by Supervisor, uh, Gray, and properly second by, uh, Supervisor Hutchins. Is there, are in a discussion?
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. President and board, that, uh, there's gonna be a open door, and people gonna be in and out of there, people gonna be in and out of, uh, E nine one one, people gonna be in and out of the U-Corps, because to my understanding, I, I heard that the prison gave a nice raise out there, and people gonna be going and getting jobs at the prison, they not gonna, uh, work for minimum wages.
Eighteen twenty-five, eighteen twenty.
They do have that.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, eighteen twenty-five, eighteen twenty. All right, well, if there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by you, sign a I. In a opposed, may they have same right, motion carried, unanimous. Uh, this is travel for, uh, James Need Corner, uh, Tuesday, July twenty-seventh through Friday, uh, June thirtieth. It's a conference.
Can't say that, July to June, it must be June to July.
Uh, my, June, it's June twenty-seventh to June thirtieth.
Toy.
I'm looking for it right now, so I'm, this is going, the next one's a lot.
So.
Scott.
We got. So this is, I'm trying to get, now, just, he's got the conference, so I'm trying to get all out. We got three of them, so it's three, it's Roland Newman, James Lee, James Lee, and Ms. DeHague.
Can I get a most? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second?
Second.
Been properly second, um, by Supervisor Gray, there be in a discussion? There be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by you, sign a I. In a opposed, may they have same right, motion carried, unanimous. And I have, uh, approval for travel for, uh, Supervisor James Ricky Gray to the, um, NACO conference, and I'll, uh, Austin, Texas, it's gonna be July twenty-first to July twenty-fourth.
That's now that approved, did we take care of this? That's now that approved. It should be for both of us, yeah, it should be on both of us.
I'll pack one month inside. It, I think, that's, yeah, you got.
Both of them in at that time, that's at July.
That's, that's July twenty-something, yeah. But I think it's it might be one of the ones that we, I think we approved it.
We, we approved both of them.
Uh-huh. And, uh, sort of maybe something that I didn't sign, if they put it back, I'm just trying to make sure I clear everything out. All right, well, I need to, that, that concludes my, well, oh, okay, now, that concludes my report, now further coming. Any further coming?
You have some? This one.
Good morning, hi everybody, I'm just, I'm just here on behalf of my neighborhood, actually, the house in front of me.
And tell you, name, give us your name and your neighborhood.
And, and I did talk to her before, but she's got a menace property, unfortunately, her supervisor is not here, so I set it up, get her information, and you present that to the board too.
I will give us the name and where you, uh, that from that.
Good morning, Dean, hi to everybody.
Yes.
My name is Sonic Kingsley, I live at one oh one Tubman Circle. The neighborhood I'm talking about is Lower Water State, that's what it used to be called. Uh, we got several houses out there that the grass is taller than me, that's a problem. We got kids in the neighborhood, we got people that live in the neighborhood, and there's nothing being done about the grass being that tall. So I'm just here to try to say what I need to do about the grass being that tall.
All right, well.
I can show you pictures.
I think, uh, I already talked to the attorney, and what I think, what he does is come to the board, and, and we, uh, demon, uh, adjudicated property, and then the county have to go in, because it is a, it's owned by somebody, so you know, the county just, I know, it might seem that, it, it, and we have, and you heard it today, we have it every day, but the county can't just pack up and say, oh, they didn't cut their grass, and we go, so we gonna follow the process, and talk to the lawyer, and give them the address, and we get, got to send the people, a lot, and then if they don't go behind that, then we'll go behind that and, uh, do what we need to do to get it cleaned up.
Okay.
That's a little too, it originates from that supervisor.
Yes.
We have it, so I'm gonna give it to him, ask him if he wants to proceed for it.
Ask him to proceed.
Okay, so do you need pictures, well, I send the pictures to him.
You, if you would like to show the pictures, perfectly fine, but would, they'll probably do is, give it to me, and I'll get them.
Give it to him, then refer it to your supervisor.
Okay.
It starts with him, so you can get those pictures out, so.
I'll get that, yeah, all right.
All right. The address, I live at this, the address, one oh, one hundred Tubman Circle.
That being all, I need a motion for closed termination, it's been moved by Supervisor Hutchins, it's been seconded by Supervisor Milton, would there be in discussion? All in favor, vote by you, sign a I. In a opposed, may they have same right, motion carried, unanimous. It was Supervisor Hutchins.